This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're ready.
September 13th, council may to call the board, would you please stand for the legions and one minute of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to consider approval of the consent agenda, which is approval of the mention of August 23rd meeting, statement of the bills paid and amount of 184,496.29, and the selection of Gordon CPA to serve as the city's auditor for the year ending December 31st, 221, and adoption of Resolution 2021 Day 15 regarding gap waiver of the 2021 audit.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda with the clerk, please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, we request our comments from the public. There being none, move on to the next item, is to consider special event permit application for Journey Pro Wrestling for an event to take place on September 17th, 2021, at City Edwardsville City Park.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what's before the group right now is a special event application from Journey Pro Wrestling to hold an event at the City Park this Friday evening. Journey Pro Wrestling is the same organization that is going to be making appearance Saturday afternoon as part of Autumn Fest. This is separate from that, so they had a venue for their September 17th event that, for reasons beyond their control, ended up not panning out, so they needed a space to host their Friday event. We were kind of a natural fit because that way they'll have equipment on hand for the Saturday event. I've got one of the promoters in the audience with us, if you've got any additional questions. We've talked over the configuration of how the event would be set up at the City Park with the Parks and Rec Supervisor. We don't really have any issues with the way that they presented the event. They've kind of generated some interest for the event through their promotion without actually announcing the date because it's ahead of this event, or, excuse me, not the date, but the location because it's ahead of this meeting and this final action. But the event is couched as a fundraising event for Windout Center for Community Behavioral Healthcare, so it was important for them to find a home to hold this event. The one outstanding item that we need to review is as it relates to the CMB sales. Chief Mathies just raised the item with me right before meeting that there may be an existing policy that might dictate exactly the security measures for that. So I don't have any major concerns with it at this point. I guess recommendation from the city staff would be approval of the special event permanent application from Journey Pro pursuant to this final review related to the CMB sales from Edwardsville Police Department.
Chief Mathies, what is the concern or question you have? Is it maybe the security that needs to be there? Is that what it is? Number?
It's related to the security. We just need to get some clarity exactly what the final policy passed by this board because reflecting from the actual ordinances in the special event, security and alcohol is not strictly spoken about. It's reflected in our applications, and the promoter has proven enough that they've got staff on hand to make sure people stay within the beer garden area. And in speaking with the deputy chief, they don't really have any issue that they needed to respond to a call. We just want to make sure that, granting them the permit, that we're going to be within the boundaries of the policies that have previously come before us.
Thank you.
And we briefly spoke to the promoter about that earlier today, and I think whatever that policy is, we're comfortable that this event can happen within those parameters. The staff recommendation would be approval of the special event permit pending the final review from police department regarding security.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event permit application from Journey Pro Wrestling for an event to take place on September 17th at Edwardsville City Park, or Edwardsville Days.
This will be for City Park. Autumn Fest is already taken care of.
Okay.
This will be for the City Park.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the special event permit for Journey Pro Wrestling for an event to take place September 17th, 2021, at Edwardsville City Park. Did you have a question?
Is it my understanding that the motion's pending that review of the item pending security?
Yes. If there are no further comments, would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
So that event will be going on Friday night, so Friday night will be a busy night for us because we will have our outdoor movie night going on at the community center. We're playing The Incredibles, so that's a completely free event that we're trying to get the word out. That's kind of the first event for Autumn Fest. And then on the other side of town, on this side of the railroad tracks, we'll have pro wrestling going on as well. So a lot to keep folks busy. Again, a free event, a couch as a community fundraiser for wind-up behavioral health. So a lot going on on Friday.
Thank you. The next item is to consider staff update regarding property on 9711 Steel Road. I believe Zach's going to cover this one as well. You could have a discussion with the...
Some email correspondence with the property owner in question, but yeah, essentially to update the group. We've not really received any further materials or submitted permit applications for this property stemming from the action of the last city council meeting. There's no official action that we're recommending at this point because we've already got the authority to move forward with demolition. Let me check real quick and see if the property owner is on the call. Obviously, he was aware of this meeting because he was at the last meeting and knew what we were going to bring to them. The last and only, to my knowledge, interaction we've had with the property owner since our last meeting is Mr. Young reached out to us on Friday getting some clarification on what exactly would be needed for a complete building permit this past Friday, I should say, and September 10th. So since then, we've not received any permit application or materials in my office.
So we don't know what his architect or the inspector said that week when they came out to do their inspection?
No, sir. We're not aware that anybody did come.
Okay.
Zach, aside from the email on Friday, has there been any back and forth communication between you or the city and the property owner?
Not since the discussion that we had at the last city council meeting where it was made pretty clear what the expectation was that the action was going to be deferred to this date and what we expected from the property owner as it relates to permit materials, either a building or rehab permit or a demolition permit. But other than the Friday, he called our city staff, got some clarification. I followed up with an email to put a fine point on it and remind them about the last council action and this meeting coming up. Since that time, there's not been any communication, no.
We do have, not that it takes action by the council for the amount, but we did receive, as I told you last time, three bids. The low bid was $8,000. I believe that's Dale Brothers, which I believe they're based out of Bonner Springs, was the low bidder, so we did receive three bids to do the demolition of the property. So when I spoke to them, they said timing would be approximately 30 days from them getting noticed to being able to probably be on the job. Could be a little less, but just got to get it in their schedule. Approximately 30 days.
Mike, when they say demolition of the property, what does that really encompass? What's that property going to look like after that?
Well, so as far as the demolition piece, it would remove all the buildings and foundations from the site, so there's an outbuilding and then the primary house. The contractor would regrade the site where the foundation's at. It is a slab-on-grade foundation, so there's no basement to remove. So they would do a rough grading, basically, clean it up. They wouldn't bring, you know, build dirt or try to do any, either tree clearing or any of those things. It's not included in the bid. So basically, they might have to clean some trees in order to get access to the building with their equipment, but they're not going to level the lot, clear it of trees or high grass and weeds. That may be a separate issue in and of itself. That is a...
A separate issue with the landowner?
That would be another issue.
As far as code violations on overgrowth and so forth?
Excuse me?
As far as overgrowth and so forth?
Correct. Even if the building, so even if there's, assume the building were to be demolished and the lot basically cleared for that purpose, the landowner, which remains that individual, still is responsible for the maintenance of that lot, keeping it clean and clear, mowed and all the other things that all other lot holders are subject to and would be subject to code enforcement issues related to those items. It is currently, unless something's happened in the last few days, it is over, you know, the grass is well overgrown, the trees are overgrown, the structure has open windows, et cetera. So you have the structural piece, which is what we're talking about here. And again, if we demolish it, then we would demolish it, a bill would be sent to the property owner along with any administrative costs. That property owner then has 30 days to make those payments. If they fail to make those payments, then a lien is filed against the property, and then we move from there, so.
Mike, just clarifying that the septic tank would also be mitigated.
Correct.
And also after grading, and they would also apply either some erosion control on the, on their graded ground.
Yeah, they would seed it.
Seed it and straw.
Seed and straw, is what we, yeah.
Hydro mold, et cetera.
Something of that nature. There's no, probably no site erosion control in the sense of fencing or things, or could be some, but fundamentally, they're going to come in off a steel road, probably demolish the property, haul it back out the same way, and they would do, again, what I would call a rough grade, you know, smooth it back out, seed it and straw on top of that. Yes, that is correct.
And in the interim? In the interim, 30 days, it's my understanding, if the gentleman, the owner, would come, is that, I mean, he's still, he has this 30-day window? If he would come in and say, "I've got this plan," right?
I would say if we haven't...
We wouldn't turn that down, which, I mean, we would rather that he take care of his property and do things right, but just knowing. So let me ask you this. So what happens 22 days from now? He comes in and gets a demo permit, and in that window, our 30 days is up where Dale Brothers would be coming out there to start demo, and he hadn't done anything. Will he have a time? Because then Dale Brothers would be starting in, you know, eight days.
Eight days, correct.
So is that, I mean, I don't, here's what I wouldn't, don't want to see happen, is that he come in 29 days later and says, "Okay, I got a demo permit," and then there's another window of however long, 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, who knows? I don't know. So what is that? What are we...
Well, I would, I would think that we would require a copy of, from that contractor, that they actually have been retained to do that work, some kind of a signed contract, not just a permit, because you could get the permit and show who your contractor is, but, you know, they're supposed to provide the contractor list, et cetera, but they're, may or may, we don't know for certain that there is a signed contract with a contractor, unless the contractor themselves comes and obtains the permit. But typically, it's the property owner, I would say most of the time, it's the property owner that obtains the permit, hires a contractor, you know, the contractor's listed as the contractor on the permit, does the work, and if there's anything that has to be addressed, we go back to the property owner, for example, if they didn't do some kind of erosion program, didn't clean it up. We would probably contact the contractor if they were there and say, "Hey, don't forget to clean, you know, you pulled some stuff out on the street, clean it up," but ultimately, it's the property in this case.
I have one more question. So say 29 days, this does happen, would the contractor we have a contract with impose a fee on us for canceling that contract?
We don't have, yeah, we have a bid. The bid didn't specifically talk to a, that particular issue or a delay, but we could address that.
If that would happen, that would be imposed on him.
Well, absolutely, yes. We would certainly pass those costs on, but I don't think we want to, I think we would want to discourage that, that if we don't have an answer, certainly 10 days prior to the start of work, I think once we're past that point, we move forward. We, you know, at that point, I would say, why would we issue a permit?
Right. And hopefully, he comes, he comes in this next week or whatever and gets lined out with the contractor, whoever it may be, and gets a demo, I mean, starts it himself, so...
So I, yeah, and I'm not certain if he's intending to move forward with a demo or with a rent-a-base.
Did he indicate which, what did he make?
I, I didn't have, did he indicate to you?
This is Zach. I can't say for sure what his intentions are, but the center of his comments seemed to indicate that he thinks he can rehab the structure.
That was the, that was what I understood from speaking to our permit clerk.
The materials he was asking about were related to, what do I need to submit for a building permit to rehab the structure?
So I think the only issue, that is our report, I, again, I don't know that I need a vote, Mayor, but unless there is some objection, I would move forward with entering into a contract with the low bidder for the demolition of this structure.
You want that in a motion?
I don't, I mean, you can. I mean, if that's the, I mean, the motions and the resolutions, we've already adopted, said if he hadn't done it by this time, that the next step would be this. So to me, you've already, as Zach said, the authority's already been established by the resolution. You gave them until this time to do certain things. Those things have not been completed to this time, and therefore, we would start moving forward with the demolition contract. We will address with them if there is any type of change in process, that we know what, if any, fees they might be. Generally, once they mobilize, there is a fee, for certain.
Okay, well, we'll not take any action then.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda will be your presentation regarding rural housing incentive districts.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is really tonight, an informative session about what is known as rural housing incentive district. This is not a new program in Kansas, but it is a new program as it relates to Edwardsville and certain others. So the first part of this, I will just note that this was actually prepared by gentleman Brandon Kane. Mr. Kane is working with one of the potential developers of the Kansas City Hospital. They, I hope that they'd be here tonight, but they were, I think, making, they were in a process in another community, and I said, "That's fine, I at least want to bring this forward and give you the details of these," and then, again, we can go from there. So you're going to see this, that it's prepared by Brandon Kane, so this is, the first part of this is not necessarily my creation, but it's right on point. So really, the first question is, is what is a rural housing improvement district or incentive district? And this is straight out of statute, but I highlighted really the big words here, which is, number one, to encourage development and to encourage development of housing. And housing can be single-family, multifamily, duplex, townhomes, so a whole plethora of housing options. So when they say housing, it was originally around rural cities and counties when it first started, and there's been some recent changes. But what it does is it authorizes cities to assist directly in the financing of public improvements that will result in housing being built. So what I'm going to say, and we'll get into it more, it's fundamentally a TIF for housing, so it works very much like a TIF district in how it's structured. There are differences to it, and we'll go through them, but I know you all have been through that process, kind of understand how that process works. Very similar business, in some respects more restricted, in another way, it's less restricted, but it's around how do you get infrastructure, brands for housing in your community, and then if you haven't had housing, that means you develop a new incentive. So again, I'm not going to go through all this, but it was originally created in 1998. Originally, it had language that had to be a city under 30,000, county, but not greater than 80,000, so Windout County, Johnson County, a number of counties around the state, cities around the state weren't eligible because of this restriction. In this last legislative session, the pass Senate Bill 90, which, among other things, struck out the county provision, so no longer do you have to be in a county under 8,000. So effectively, it made it eligible to any county in Kansas, all under five counties, but it still maintained a restriction saying that that'd be cities under 6,000. So for example, I can't see Kansas couldn't utilize this program because of the population, but Edwardsville couldn't. There are some cities in Johnson County. So it really opened up a few. One of the differences between TIFs, and you're in here a little more about those tonight, Scott, and the RHID, they allow them to go a little bit longer, they can go up to 25 years, just like a TIF would have to go that long, but TIFs are generally 20 years, and the RHID is 25. So they gave a longer period mainly because a lot of rural communities, the value increase wasn't that much, and they were going to take a longer time to pay off.
Yeah, I want to add just a quick, so when you, so will you create a TIF, well, no, an RHID district and then come back with an RHID plan?
Correct.
Is just like a district TIF plan, same?
Very much the same.
In 25 years, it's up to 25, so you could set it shorter, but I don't know why anybody would ever want to set it shorter, but 25 years the cap?
Yes, it's really about, just like a TIF, it's really about what are the covered expenses, and when they're paid off, they're paid off.
And it doesn't, your 25-year clock doesn't start until the plan is submitted or accepted? Okay. I don't think, I don't think yours on. I didn't push my button, I apologize, but, yeah, okay. Okay, so you said the last thing that I asked was, so the 25-year clock wouldn't start until the RHID plan is approved?
Just like the plan versus the district. You create a district, and then you can have one or more plans. Same here, you can have more than one plan in a district. You can have more than one district. The difference here is, and it's kind of in this last part of the slide, what determines whether the district is a district or not has to do with a housing study or housing analysis. Now, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but this doesn't have to be, you'll have to pay tens of thousands of dollars. There's a number of things the council for resolutions has to make determinations, but it's around, have you had new housing in your community? Do you have the potential for new housing? When was the last time you had a sudden, how many lots do you have available for your typical housing, or do you have a particular type of housing that you have to have?
So when, so when that is established, when that questions are answered, who then makes that decision on if it is approved, district? Okay, all right.
So again, permitted use is pretty straightforward, right? Site preparation, water, sewer, streets, storm drainage, utility sidewalks, those types of things. So it's about infrastructure and grounds, just like others. You can't use, build a building, right, so you can't really do the above ground. The one exception that happened in Senate Bill 90 is if it's a building over 25 years of age in a downtown as part of Main Street District, then they do allow... They do allow all this structure. I believe that Ottawa, actually, this week, I was reading, is presenting one of these, this type of projects. They have a downtown, you know, so it would have to be, generally, if you think about old downtown, those existing buildings, they want to convert the buildings, maybe have commercial, now they want to convert it to lofts or housing above, above, above. So I'm going to stop for a second.
Will you tap the mic?
It's beyond, it sounds on. We turned it off on orange. Would you have to switch to the other mic? Is that good? Right, yeah, yeah. Hold on, that one.
This is, oh, yeah. Wow, you might want to turn this one down now. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6, 5, 4, 3, whoop. There you go. Good, good. That works for me. To the audience out there, we apologize for the technical difficulties here. So again, those are just permitted uses and, you know, again, very much like other projects, it's around the infrastructure. That's what you're trying to support so that the infrastructure can support the building of new housing. That's the point. It is now green. Does that work? Perfect. I'm not going to touch anything.
Councilmember Kayhar, can you hear Mike okay now?
He does sound a lot more clear now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to speak up, too. Okay, I'll try to speak up too. I don't think I'm good. There we go. So, you talk about, and, and this goes to your question about part of the steps for the creation. So, one of the first steps, and, and we've, we've somewhat prepared a draft, you have to do a housing needs analysis, right? And again, this doesn't have to be a third-party housing needs analysis. It's about your area, right, and your particular needs and your history. So, there's a lot of data available through the real estate community, for GIS documents, through the building community, and of course, we know a lot about our own community. You know, for example, we know we don't have but two lots that are in a platted subdivision that can be built upon today. Two, that's all, that we have in a platted subdivision. We have two additional lots over in Rock Ridge that could be more quadplexes that's owned by a party that could be developed. That's really from a existing subdivision to be on. Of course, people can buy land and build a house on it, but it's not necessarily a subdivision type, type of lot. So, basically, what happens is you prepare this study. You'll have some discussion of, of that at a future meeting, and you really have to come up with four findings. Those four findings are shortage of quality housing, that that shortage is, is expected to persist in the future, right? If you don't have places to build on, then it's likely to persist, that the shortage is a subst- a substantial deterrent to future economic growth. I think we've heard in the past, right, whether it's, if you want retail, you need rooftops. Where, where do people live that wanna work in our communities, you know, people, teachers and police and fire and workers that are, you know, the four thousand plus people that come into our community every day? You know, they don't have an option of a place to live. And then, that the ability to do the project is dependent upon an incentive to make it work, right? To make it so that the costs are there. That report then gets submitted to the Secretary of Commerce, and that's, that's the piece, right? So, it goes to the Secretary of Commerce Office, they review the housing analysis report, and, and they either concur or don't concur with the findings of the city council. They say, well, no, I think you've got, you know, all kinds of housing, and this isn't, this isn't reasonable. I've not been through the process, so I can't speak to that. I mean, a number of these projects have been done around Kansas, but again, generally been in rural areas where these have been done, and so, we can look to that and to the process. Mister Vogel is, is quite familiar with this process. That's really what he'll bring to the, to the process, him and, and Mister Kane. They, they have familiar the process a number of times for successful projects. So, how does that process happen? Well, the very first step, again, is you'll have a resolution. Obviously, resolutions have to be approved by the city council, and really, what that resolution will do is give a legal description of the area. Again, you're gonna hear, very similar to this process tonight in the next item, a map showing where that proposed area is. That your resolution says, yes, we've done a housing analysis, and that, that housing analysis addresses those four points that we've spoken about, and then that is all sent to the Secretary of Commerce for his approval. So, then what happens is, assuming he provides approval, then he will send that back. That generally is anywhere from a thirty to sixty day process. So, until you have a response, you, you can't really move forward to the next step. And then you come back, and you'll have a second resolution. At the time of the second resolution, there will be a development plan, very much like you've seen, right? It's going to be this many units, this is where the roads, you know, think of it like a concept or a site plan. Here's where the buildings are, here's where the, you know, streets are at, storm drainage, parks, whatever's built into that plan, and there's a development agreement, right? And the development agreement then spells out, what are the things that will be reimbursed, how will they be reimbursed, you know, what are those processes? Just like we've done with any number of other development agreements. So, nothing really new with that. You will then call for a public hearing, and that public hearing basically has to be within a set amount of time, and we notify all of the other taxing entities. So, we're required to notify the other taxing entities, but only two taxing entities kind of have a, 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 a review, so to speak, to say no. And that is the, the county and the school district. So, those are the two that could, could have objections that have standing. Again, that's very similar to other types of projects here. I have not talked to the county specifically on this. I have spoken to this, to the superintendent in broad terms, and I, generally, they're in favor and support of quality housing being built in the community, and quite honestly, in Edwardsville, because they have an elementary school here, and they would like to have more students in their, in their school. So, they actually are positive on housing, and they said that they've been positive on other housing projects. So, obviously, the quality of the housing has a lot to do with it, so. And of course, then we have to do a notice in, in the paper. So, again, technically, pretty much the same things. Then, at that public hearing, which, again, happens from thirty days to seventy days after that second resolution. So, in the resolution, and all that gets published, there's the development plan, and there's the development agreement that's public, right? People can review it, they come and make comments on it through the public hearing process, and at that point, you can adopt an ordinance which literally creates the, the, the plan for that district. And then, you move forward with, you know, the construction and the normal processes. Again, the two that have the ability to impact, it's the school district and the county. In reality, they benefit as well, like all development, right? So, I mean, population growth is something the county talks about a lot, having housing available, you know, a broad variety of housing availability is something we talk about in economic development. Obviously, locally, we know the issues around housing and how it can help us, so, th- those are the things there. So, the big one is the funding mechanism. I don't think I have to reiterate this too much, but like these other projects, right? You can either do developer reimbursed, which we generally refer to as pay-go, or you can do bond financing. I will tell you that this group came and said, we're not even going to discuss bond financing, it's only gonna be pay-go. And I said, that's a good thing, because that is the only thing we're gonna discuss, right? We are not going to bond fund this with a TIF bond. So, if they want to pursue this, it's going to be developer, you put the money up, and over a period of time, you can get your eligible expenses repaid. Pretty straightforward. So, that's kind of the package from a overview and a legal standpoint, the process. So, are there any questions at this point about that part of it?
Yes.
Please.
How broad can the district be in size? And I know we're gonna talk about this a little bit later, about the fifty acres versus, you know, but, I mean, so, and I, and I know this is hypothetical, but what if we listed the whole boundaries of Edwardsville and said, this is our district? And up the plan, when we create the, a plan and e- in, within that district, we create multiple plans within that district?
I don't know that I have an answer for that, to be quite honest. I think what probably happens is it becomes too expensive to support it. I mean, you would want to do the boundaries where you wanted housing, for sure, and not commercial areas.
Because we're not huge, you know, geographically.
Right. Now, I, whether you could create two districts at the same time, that's something we would need to research. And part of, again, tonight is, really, to get this forward to you, it's relat-, I mean, it's not a new program, but it's new again to cities like ours, and, and we're not the only ones looking at it, I know that for sure. But it is a good opportunity, but I, I, that'll be a question I will take back and a, and get answered.
Yeah, if multiple districts can, if they can run concurrent, and then if, how, how this, the geographical area. Second, the, the amount, can you go back a couple slides to where it was showing the amount? I know, like, if we're doing a, a TIF, you know, we can TIF the amount and a percentage, or is this?
Pretty much the same.
So, we, we, right there, I think it was, RHID captures a hundred percent of the incremental increase in property.
Right, the TIF portion. So, there is a little bit of difference between rural housing and TIF districts. So, in TIF districts, right, you have your, your total mill levy, and then you have the portion that can be used for TIF. So, in TIF districts, the state takes away their part, the one point five, and, and until, what was it, two years ago, Scott, I think, until about two years ago, they took out the twenty mil, right, and then they added the other eight now. So, there, it's that twenty-nine and a half. In these districts, they only take out the one and a half and the twenty. So, you can still capture that other eight in the RHIDs as it's currently written. So, it allows for a little more of that tax revenue to be used for this. Twenty-five years, but again, it's all based on the cost that you deem, I mean, number one, they have to be eligible, and number two, as a, as a council, we deem what we want allowed to be used for within the district, right? So, that's the development agreement part, so.
So, do we, do we still determine the percentage?
Not the percentage, I mean, the, 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 the amount, by percentage, do you mean the amount of? So, there's no percentage really on TIFs. I mean, you don't do partially, just about time. So, it's statutory, how much of the total tax.
So, it is one hundred percent of the incremental difference?
Yes, which is the same way that TIFs are. Now, in CIDs or some of those, right, or if you use sales tax. So, this has nothing to do with sales tax. This is only property, that's the only thing it addresses, right? So, it doesn't address sales tax, of course, there wouldn't be sales taxes really in this situation, other than building materials. So, it, it is a hundred percent, but that hundred percent is different between RHIDs and TIFs, just based on the statute. And it could go longer than a TIF, but for the most part, the expenses are pretty close to the same. I, I think they spell them out a little more in the TIF statute, because they talk about legal costs and some of the other things, and it's not as defined here. But, but fundamentally, it's infrastructure. That's what we're looking at.
Well, I think any funding mechanism that we can bring to increase housing and here, I'm, I'm for it. I mean, I'm glad that it's been opened up to, to us.
So.
Mike, I have a question. Would this have anything to do with the NRP program, or, or not, this does not qualify in the, in the, in NRP?
Yeah, so, excuse me. So, as you know, under the NRP, under the NRP programs, the way those work is, they really don't help the developer, because what it is, it's a tax rebate program, and so, I go and I buy a lot and build a house on it, and then, or it could be a commercial, but for this purpose residential, and then I can get a rebate based on whatever the city's adopted for a number of years. So, it helps in the sense that I, as the property owner, once it's developed, can get some of my tax back. So, it may make my cost of ownership less, but it doesn't help the developer get any benefit for any of the work that they have to do to build lots.
The reason I ask is, because this is a program, what we're talking about here is a program that basically, if it, if it's like a TIF, then I wouldn't see that the NRP would, would work in this, and that's the reason I asked that.
Right, you couldn't do them both, you couldn't do them both concurrently, no. Because there'd be no taxes to rebate, so, so.
If you're gonna tip it, why do you want to do a rebate?
Right, so what the RHID does is, what it helps to do is take that land cost down, and, and you'll see that in the housing report, right? So, if, if it's gonna cost me eighty thousand dollars a lot to build it, now I have to build houses, say, that are two hundred and forty thousand or two hundred and, three hundred thousand on those lots. That market isn't readily available where developers want to come do that necessarily on some lots. So, it reduces the land cost, so therefore, the property cost, the all-in cost with the house can be more achievable by homeowners, i- is really what it does. So, the focus is kind of the same, but i- i- it's just like, you know, they, they've done a lot of those NRPs over in Bonner Springs, and it, and it's a good, from a sales tool, right, it's a great sales tool, but somebody has to fund all that infrastructure, and, and, and that's, that's kind of the catch twenty-two.
Thank you.
So, going forward, again, we have been in discussions with a development group. So, they originally came to town and just said, hey, are you aware of this program? This is the kind of lots I'm looking for, you know, what do you have? So, they needed to be easy access to the existing roadway system, utilities adjacent to the property, right? Very near or adjacent, because obviously, extending utilities is the most expensive thing, you know. They weren't necessarily trying to go build a four or five hundred, single-family home subdivision, that wasn't really the focus. And so, they came forth, we threw out some ideas, and they have focused on, a- a- and I'm not trying to say anything other than, they're still in negotiations with the landowner over pricing and contracts, so I don't want to put out there in the public something that would impact that, right? But they have a tract of land that they're pursuing, that's approximately ten acres in size. They've laid it out with a concept that would put fifty-four units, so twenty-seven housing buildings. So, they would be townhomes, and they would be owner occupied. So, this is, so when in a townhome owner occupied, while you may have a building with the shared wall between them, you physically have two separate lots and two separate owners, right? So, it's not duplexes, generally, you have an owner, and they may lease out the other side, or they may lease it, but it's one, it is actually one lot or duplex. So, when you split them or, you know, make them into separates, they're generally townhomes. And again, in this case, we're talking owner occupied, not rental properties. They are looking at a sale price based on, you know, if, if this program goes through and all their other costs, that each unit would sell around two hundred and sixty-five thousand plus, and they have done other projects, so that they're, they know their, their market. So, that puts each building in that five hundred thousand dollar range. So, if you think about what a five hundred thousand dollar home typically looks like, that's what you basically would envision. The difference is, it would have two front doors and two garage doors, if, if you think about it like that. But the housing, they're talking twelve to fifteen hundred square fi- square feet on the main level, and then depending if it's an up or a down, another nine to twelve hundred square feet potentially.
Not a lot, unlike Delaware Ridge north of Casey's on State Avenue.
I think that's probably comparable, yeah. There's some I, I know that are in DeSoto that are, are similar to this. There, there's a few others around, and, and I believe that when they come in two weeks, if, if, you know, again, we're not making decisions tonight, I'm trying to give you a lot of information so we can have discussions, and you can be prepared beforehand. I think they will come and show you some of the product that they have put out there in the past, and I, I think, it, you know, it's a quality product from what I've seen. So, the plan going forward at this point, right, again, as you saw, it's a fairly lengthy project, is at our next meeting, we would have a resolution prepared, we would have a housing study prepared. I have a draft of it that I'll provide to the council, because it's still a working document. Of course, it'll have all the legal descriptions of the particular lot in question. And we will be prepared, if, if so, if that's the, you know, way the council wants to go, to move it to that, past that first step, which again, first step is adopt the resolutions with the housing study, the legals and the map, package all that up, it goes to the Secretary of State. And, and then we await the results from that. And then assuming that there's an approval there, we would come back to this body with the development plan and development agreement, have that, call for that public hearing. So people would have an opportunity to speak on the public, on those plans in public. We would notify all the, the taxing entities, again, the most specific ones, county and the school district. And if everything went like a well-oiled machine, uh, which we know doesn't always happen, but this could be concluded by end of year, and they have indicated they are ready to move forward with doing this project early twenty twenty-two. So, uh, obviously, they gotta wait for some approvals and then go out to get bids and, you know, projects. So it's a developer-built project, so the city's not building the streets or anything, obviously. We have input into those processes, so. Uh, if everything went well, we'd do the first resolution at the next meeting. You know, it, it's, there's some assumption here that the turnaround would be about thirty days, we could come back in October, have the public hearing, consider the ordinance, and then, uh, or consider that resolution, and then, uh, you would, uh, consider that ordinance establishing the district, and then you have the thirty-day period for the county or school district to make notice. It, it's really a pretty good opportunity, and again, that just wasn't available to us before. I mean, it's been around and it's been used, and it's been effective, but you would probably see these in uh, more western, uh, Kansas cities and counties. I think you probably have seen some of this maybe used, uh, around some of those communities where you had meatpacking and you had large influx of people coming into a community. You wouldn't have seen it kind of on this side of the state much, because it just wasn't available because of the, the county limitation and the city limitations. With that, uh, I, I really don't have any more presentations, I'm happy to take any other questions we'll ask about, can you create, you know, more than one district at the same time? And how big could it, you know, could your district be, you know, the size of all your residential properties or not? So we'll have that answer to you.
Mike, I had a quick question, if you would. Um, could you explain, once the homes are built, so probably twenty twenty-three, if, if a home's there and someone's living in it, how long would it be before the city and county and taxing entities receive money, um, instead of the developer for property taxes?
Well, so like other TIFs, so the existing property taxes still get paid to all the entities at a hundred percent. And of course, those that are excluded, which is basically the state and the school district are excluded. So the answer to the rest of that question is really dependent upon the financials of it to say, y- you know, are they getting reimbursed for, you know, million and a half dollars or for four million dollars? And I don't have that answer tonight, and that would then, and then you would, again, just like a TIF district, you'd run a revenue stream and say, okay, if those homes are gonna build over, you know, you're gonna fill it out over eighteen or twenty-four months, uh, then they're gonna be generating this much income, and this much gets allocated towards the, the infrastructure, the public infrastructure that's put in the ground. And then at the end of that, uh, those revenue streams start coming back to the taxing entities as a whole. Again, I think one of the things I would note, and it's kind of true of TIFs in general, is, you know, with the TIF, you're keeping a hundred percent of those taxes in the community for the purposes of your infrastructure. So, you know, that's public infrastructure, at the end of the day, it's a public street, public storm sewer, public sewers, uh, what, whatever is included in there, uh, and of course, the customers would be paying for those pieces that they would pay for. If it's just general tax, so let's just say the city said, uh, we're gonna go out and pay for it and keep all the taxes, we only get about twenty-five cents on the dollar of that tax. So in reality, if you wanna pay for the public infrastructure, the benefit is to use a mechanism like this, because you're getting all of the tax dollars towards those public improvements, even though you don't get to see those taxes on the tax roll for a period of time.
And did I understand right that we still collect the amount of taxes we're currently collecting until the R H I D district is fulfilled?
We, we will always collect the taxes that are collected on the property today going forward, et cetera. So whatever that base tax amount is set, uh, and it's dependent upon when you create the district, but there's a base tax amount, and so everything going forward on that base tax amount stays with the taxing entities that were already receiving those taxes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider resolution number twenty twenty-one day sixteen, setting a public hearing for the creation of a redevelopment district tax increment financing district.
I will turn this over to the true expert, which is, which is Scott, and, uh, he can probably correct me on R H I Ds as well. Had a few discussions, but if I got something wrong, so, and he would be an instrumental part in that development uh, agreement process, obviously, so I will turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor, council members, um, no, I thought Michael did a great job. The, uh, one thing I will point out, Councilmember Stites, uh, you had a question on the percentages, and I think where you were going is uh, all this TIF revenue, I mean, it, it's TIF, it's the exact same program, a few minor differences. Uh, that money all flows to the city, and you can do the same thing, you can identify a city project and a developer project, and you can say, we're gonna split it fifty-fifty, we're gonna do another split. Yeah, I, I thought that's what you were after, and, uh, yes, you can do that. You can also do multiple redevelopment districts if you'd like. Um, I think the issue you're gonna have is what you can get the, uh, Department of Commerce, the Secretary to, to approve. How big a district, how many? But, um, on the next item, as you know, uh, we've been discussing, uh, Michael, do you have a map? Uh, we've had discussions about creating the TIF district, uh, down on Wood End Road. The TIF statute states that, uh, in order to create a TIF district, it has to meet certain statutory criteria, uh, one of which is blight. Uh, when you look at the definition of blight in the statute, it has a provision for property where a majority of it, uh, majority of your TIF district is located within a one-hundred-year floodplain. As you can see on the screen, uh, we have identified five parcels off Wood End Road that, uh, meet that definition of blight. When you look at that property as a whole, as a totality, a majority of it is in a floodplain. Uh, we've actually received a certificate, uh, from, uh, B H C, your civil engineering firm, stating that of the fifty-point-five-seven acres in this redevelopment, proposed redevelopment district, uh, forty-one-point-three acres or eighty-one percent of it is within a hundred-year floodplain. So it does meet the statutory definition of blight. Uh, the first step in creating the TIF district is setting a public hearing, uh, on the proposal. Uh, so the resolution before you, uh, that you have before you tonight, uh, establishes October twenty-fifth as the date where we will hold a public hearing. Uh, if this resolution is approved tonight, we'll mail it, uh, to the county, the school district, all the property owners, and we'll also, uh, publish it in the, uh, Echo. And the city will then hold a public hearing on October twenty-fifth, uh, where you can take comments from the public on whether or not to establish this district. Uh, if you, uh, after that public hearing, that you can then decide if you'd like to proceed and establish the district or not. As of right now, we have the, you know, th- this is a first step, uh, once we establish, if it is established, uh, the redevelopment district, we could then look at doing individual project plans within that district. Uh, but as of right now, there's, uh, while there may have been discussions, there's not any specific uh, development in mind, this is just, uh, establishing the district, so hopefully that development will occur. Happy to take any questions you may have. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, providing for a notice of public hearing to be given for the twenty, what did we say, the twenty?
Twenty-fifth.
Fifth of October.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one day sixteen, setting a public hearing for the creation of a redevelopment district. Um, and the, uh, the date of that public hearing would be October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Are there any more questions? Go ahead.
Well, it's kind, it's kind of about your, the, the first thing we were talking about, so do you want me to wait till after we vote on this and then ask? I just had a quick question about the, what you answered when you've got it originally.
If, if it doesn't pertain to this motion, yeah. There are no further questions, was the clerk please call roll?
Adam?
Yes.
Kayhar? Councilmember Kayhar, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, did you not hear me?
No. Did you vote yes?
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Malot? Councilmember Driver?
Yes.
And Councilmember Stites?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, now you wanna?
If I can, yeah.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, so what you answered in the, in the beginning was exactly where I was going about if we set a fifty-fifty for a specific project. Does that, does that project have to be within the R H I D district?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes, in the city, and here again, um, you'd make a list of all the infrastructure that has to be completed for a project, and then you divide it between you and the developer. And then you, once you divide, agree on who's doing what, you then agree on who gets how much of the reimbursement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will know that we have that. About how many funds? You know, again, how many funds are there available? How do you wanna, do you wanna use all? Oftentimes, TIF districts, we have more project expenses than we have revenue. In this case, we could have, you know, less, we could have more revenue expenses. And so we just haven't got there because discussion of what even financials. So you have to get to that.
Thank you very much.
Are you ready? Next item is to consider certifying the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual budget.
Thank you again. So, um, really, this is going to be, you know, at the last meeting, we did our public hearing. There was various discussions and some questions that have come out of that, uh, from the meeting and since then. So really, what my plan is tonight is to step back a little bit. So what we put in the packet, which is what we presented or proposed, the staff recommendation from that meeting, and we'll work from there, so just kind of give you a, a background. So there was really two broad questions that I gained from the last meeting, uh, and, and discussions. And it's this question around tax burden, whether it's the mill levy tax burden, however, you know, the right words are. So that's one piece, and the second piece is, well, how do we get to a balanced budget? And, and so we'll have some discussions really around those two items first. And then we will also provide you an alternative budget that we think gets you to both of those places. So we're starting with what we started with last time and working from there, so. The first thing I want, and, and I, I know numbers get to be that thing that's sometimes hard, but I'm gonna try to make it as simple as possible. So here's what we know. We know that our twenty twenty final assessed valuation was seventy-five million, six sixty-four oh thirty-nine. And we know the estimated valuation is eighty-two, nine thirty-one, five oh six, or a growth rate, gross growth rate of nine-point-six percent. Now, remember, not all of the value, assessed value comes from residential property owners. Rather, most of it comes around, two-thirds is coming from your commercial tax base. But if we start with that eighty-two, nine thirty-one, well, what's in that number that wasn't in that number the year prior, right? So if I have a house last year and I have a house this year, you take that. But if there wasn't a house there, now there's a house there, that's not really an impact on the broad tax base, it's only an impact on the person that built a new house. So the first thing that comes out of there is this property with change in use, and as you can see, that's a large number, two-point-four million. It's really made up of two numbers. One was an I R B project that came off the tax rolls for about three and a half million. And unfortunately, there was a change in use that took property from a commercial to a vacant status, because nothing was built on it, and that took a, took about a million off the other way. But at the end, we have about two and a half, a little less than two and a half million in, in change use, so, right? It had nothing to do with the rest of the tax base. You then have new improvements and remodels. Now, those could be residential or commercial, they don't break that out, of course, they just say somebody built something extra, right? They added something to an existing building, so that's a new improvement. Or they remodeled it, typically, they didn't change the structure, but they may have done enough things to it to improve its value significantly. I mean, generally, painting your house or putting a new roof on or something like that is not going to end up in this remodel, it's generally going to be, I went in and took my nineteen forties house and I gutted it, and I put all new, you know, improvements to the inside house, something of significant values. If I take those out, now our net rate of growth is six-point-two percent. If I take out those things that didn't impact anybody but those property owners, our real rate is six-point-two percent. So if I use six-point-two percent as the rate of growth, so saying that all the properties or residential properties grew at six-point-two percent, because we're mainly focused on residential property. If I use that number, we know in twenty twenty, the average residential value as provided by the Wyandotte County Appraiser, which we used that number last year, was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. If we grow that by the six-point-two percent, we come up to one hundred and eighty-nine, two ninety-five. So that would now be the average value of a home in Edwardsville. And for that average home in Edwardsville, if the budget that was presented to you was approved as it was, they would pay thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents in taxes more annually, or two dollars and seventy-seven cents. That's their monthly impact. Now, something that I had, uh, Bradley, our planner, do, he's able to pull G I S data from the county. And so he pulled the appraised, all of the valuations that are out there, and we pulled out just single-family detached homes. Now, we don't have twenty twenty-one as a data set that's available, so we're working off of twenty twenties. But we had nine hundred and thirty-two single-family detached homes. So there's residential properties out there that may be vacant land, multifamily, even the, uh, uh, nursing homes get counted as a type of residential structure, because people reside there and live there. We pulled all that out, so these would be houses like you would typically find, you know, a single lot with a single house. Most, all of us reside in, right? So there are nine hundred and thirty-two of those, and sixty-two percent of all the properties in Edwardsville are below two hundred thousand, which correlates to this almost perfectly, right? So again, a large percentage of our homes are really at or below that estimated residential value, which is what we would expect, because that's the average, right? So we've got mean, median, average, so it's right at that. So we've got mean, median, average, so it's right at average. So I think it's fair to say, under that mill levy proposal, that average person, if they had a six point two percent growth, would be paying around thirty-three dollars a month. Now, the, the second thing, and we did this last year as well.
Correction per year?
Per year, I'm sorry, thirty-three, yeah, thirty-three, twenty-four per year, two seventy-seven per month. Right? So last year, we did this. I took you as the council, as our, as our group of residential properties, and said, how, how did it impact you? Because I think as a group, you probably represent most of the, you know, styles, whether it's living on a large piece of property that's housed with agriculture, to living in the old town, to living in a traditional subdivision, you know, each of you'll kind of go across that cross section. I will say, we took out Mr. Stites's property from this, this project because clearly, with the loss of his house, his value went down significantly because there's not a house there. So for the purpose of this, we, you're not included in these numbers. But overall, y'all grew at four point five three percent collectively. I'm not telling anybody's, right? Some of y'all are more than that, some of you are less than that, some of you may have gained, some of y'all may have had, had decreases. That's, that's not for me to, to discuss. So, but overall, you grew at four point five three, which is pretty close. And so based on that growth rate, the average homeowner, if average homeowner is this number, one hundred and eighty-six, three twelve, right? A little bit less. Their taxes would be between last year and this year at the proposed mill levy, eighteen dollars and seventy-three cents, or a dollar fifty-six a month. Right? So how does that impact that tax burden question, right? So this is mainly related to mill levy and how it impacts the average property. So you've seen this before. I pull that, this group here, and I say, how would that look if I charted it out on tax burden? Now, tax burden is really about how much you're paying in total taxes relative to, to the year or years. So what this chart shows you is that, on average, as a group, your properties have grown five point one four percent over, since twenty seventeen. So over a five-year period, about five percent a year. And that's probably pretty close to what the community as a whole has seen. Now, only one taxing entity has had a stable tax rate, and that's the state. And that's because the state is one point five mils, period. So they don't ever change it. They don't have to, they don't have to live by this truth and taxation discussions we've had in the past or the notices that they're collecting more money this year than they did last year. They, they are exempt from all of that, but they become the baseline, right? So because their mill levy stays the same, values fluctuate. So if I look at that, and I take the mill that we're proposing, which is a one-mill reduction, how do we compare to the other taxing? Well, as you can see, on an average annual period over the last five years, it's two point four five percent. So the tax, your tax burden has been increasing by two point four five percent each year for the last five years. What I would note is the inflation rate's been two point seven three percent. So we're not, we're not growing the tax burden even at the level of the inflation rate, and we're not doing it at the flat rate. So if we were just flat, we'd be five point one four, just like the state. Now, what do the other taxing entities do? Well, our school district likewise has had reductions. It has a fairly large reduction this year, which pushed it down. When I did this for you last time, they were slightly under the number, which was, I think last year was at five point oh seven percent was the average over five years. And I'm going to tell you what you already know. Most of your tax burden growth's occurring at the county, the community college, and the library, of which we have no impacts on, I mean, relative to this body being. So that's where most of the tax burden is falling. But I would say, but on an everyday basis, who's providing services? Right? I mean, none of those are providing police or fire or public works or snowplow or any of those other things. Hey, I mean, the county, right? We got to have county jails, we got to have county court systems, that costs money, no doubt about it. Right? Community college, you know, I think I've said it in the past. I think that the funding mechanism that they have is, is not really a good mechanism because only those counties, and if you look at the twenty-eight counties that have a community college, they will have higher mill levies than all the other counties in the state. Right? Because the county where the community college is housed is the one that sets a mill levy. Now, they can charge out of districts and, and if you're out of state, out of country, but it generally doesn't make up that difference, it's a small amount, right? In reality, it should be funded, in my opinion, like other public schools. That is, it would have a collection of revenues statewide, and then that placed into those community colleges so that your child, whether they live in, you know, Wyandotte County or Atchison County, if they want to come to, you know, come to Kansas City, Kansas Community College, can come and pay a tuition, whatever that tuition is, and it would be the same for all students in our state. I don't get to set that policy, but that's one of the big impact. And of course, the library district, while it's a fairly small mill levy, it only impacts a portion of the county, as you know. So, you know, it's Pat, right? The, the, where, right, Turner, Turner Edwardsville and Piper, Piper, yeah, Piper Edwardsville, Turner, Pat. I knew I'd get there. So they are what they are. So this is using forty-two point two nine eight, which is what we had recommended as a mill for this body. Again, we don't set the mill, we really set the expenses, but that's what drives it. All right, so that's kind of the discussion around this idea of, of the tax burden. And I'm not asking for any approval, but does that make sense of how we look at tax burden? Answered the broader question? Okay. So the second question, and this comes up, this is not unique, is, well, what's a balanced budget? I mean, it seems like a simple question, right? Well, balanced budget's a balanced budget, but it's not so simple in the way we budget. And, and I went, Kansas is a little unique, but just budgets in general, right? So there's really two ways we look at that. Total resources, total expenditures. That's really the state definition. But when the state looks at that, they look at total resources being not only what you're going to collect in the current year, but everything you've saved in prior years, your fund balance. So they take the position effectively, you can spend all the money that you have already saved and all you're going to earn, and you can expend it all. Now, no city, and no, no manager I've ever met would, would ever bring that concept to a political body and say, let's spend everything we've got. I shouldn't say that, I probably do know why. You know, but that's how you get into negative fund balances because you have nothing, and then something happens, right? Something happens, you have a COVID. Now, we were pretty fortunate through COVID, but not everybody. You know, there's a number of things that could happen in this community, a, a natural disaster, you know, a fire. There's a lot of things that could happen that would adversely impact the financial integrity of this community, and we have to be prepared for it. That's why we set that fund balance reserve fifteen to eighteen. The second definition is, you're really just looking at the current year. How much am I going to bring in in this current year and how much is going to go out in this current year? And I want those two numbers to balance, even though you may have expenses that you saved for in the past, but now want to spend today. So as you know, we have certain revenues that came in through cares, as an example, that we, we, we spent in the fire department, but we still have the remnants sitting there, so to speak, or the new, the new money coming in. So it may come in in one year and be spent in another, right? It just, that happens, that's the way it goes. We don't normally use those for operating expenses because they're one-time revenues, but they may be expenses over a year or two years. So that, that's a possibility. So when you look at current revenue, current expenditures, you get a different vision of what is a balanced budget. And it's probably in reality somewhere in between these two definitions. So and, and we, we actually had a sit-down with, with Ms. Kayhar on this, I thought it was, it was valuable. So one of the things we looked at here was, well, how does this look over a period of time? And so, as you know, we always set budgets in August typically. This is a little different this year because it changed, but we're setting those in August, and we still have four months to operate in the current year, and we're guessing about things that are, you know, sixteen months away, a year and a half away, right? It, it's, so there's guess. So when we adopted our budget for the current year that we're in right now, we assumed we're going to have revenues of six million and a little more, and expenditures of about six point two million, and we were going to spend down our fund balance by a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. So we, we were planning to spend down in the current year. Now, a lot of that had to do with uncertainty around revenues. So we, we felt we had pretty good certainty around the expenditure side, but again, right? This is beginning of COVID or even a little before. You're, you know, but there's all this stuff going on, people are talking, you know, everything's going to come to an end, and oh my, what's going to happen? Well, the good news is for us, in reality, our revenues came in at about six, is looking to come in at this point at about six point four million dollars. A lot of that strength has been around the sales and use tax areas, both city and county side, especially on the use tax. I don't think most people predicted that. Thankfully, we don't have that one large sales tax place where something happens and it can affect you really quick. Generally, property taxes are a little more stable. And, and we, quite honestly, we've seen pretty good growth. I, I would be probably more concerned about property value growth in future years at this point until we know what the economy's going to do on the commercial side, right? So having a good reserve is actually a plus there. But as you can see, we held, we, you know, we think expenditures are going to come in back right online. I mean, twenty-four thousand, if they come in within twenty-four thousand, that's, you know, negligible, you know, one tenth, one percent or two, or whatever, I mean, it's very low. But we're looking at about a three hundred thousand dollar swing from when we started this process to today. We, we have around three hundred thousand dollars more than we were anticipating. All right. So to carry this a little bit farther and look at this, and this kind of gets to more of the, what is a balanced budget? Is it one year, is it two years, is it three years? For this purpose, we took a two-year period. So as you saw before, we are estimating for twenty twenty-one that we're going to have revenues of six point four million and expenditures of six point two million. We then, based on the budget presented to you for twenty-two, we are looking at about six point four eight six on the revenue, six point five nine eight on the expenditure side. But if I look at total revenues to total expenditures for twenty-one and twenty-two estimated, we're actually looking as if we will be ahead by about seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollars. So if, if I'm not looking at just the specific period of January one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the picture changes a little bit. And, and again, I think we've said this in the past, we've had years where we've budgeted to expend more in a given year than previous year. I think our cautions have generally been, you know, how do you do that? What do you spend it on, et cetera? So so going back to the original staff recommendations that you had before you, 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 you know, again, we're, we're proposing that the expenditure, which is really what you adopt on the budget side, of six million, five ninety-eight, three twenty. It includes the one additional police officer to ensure our minimum staffing. I know we got sidetracked with this concept of detective, I'll take the blame for that. I think as Mr. Mathies showed us, it, it's really about having staff so you don't have to pull it from other places. So just be clear, it's an additional police officer into the minimum staffing. It's, it had a part-time person in there. It had fifty thousand dollars in various capital improvements in parks, cemetery, community center. Those weren't specifically tied to a project. We just know there's things out there like community center needing paint, it needs, you know, gutters. There's things at the cemetery, you know, we, we spent money and time on headstone replacements and some of that. I mean, those things cost money, and so we want to do more of that. There's the old cemetery, whenever, whenever the right word is for it, that's up here, and we want to figure out ways to have access to it. So we set aside those monies mainly to say we'd have them set aside. Compensation, we've talked about. And so what we came to you, and the number was a little bit higher, it was like one twenty-six. So this budget has a deficit, if you're looking only at current year, of about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The change that we made was, and I think we talked to you about it. So when we budget, and we don't know persons coming in, what their benefits are going to be, we kind of budget worst-case scenario. And in this case, this was the office manager. Well, now we know what that, that is, and so we would have adjusted it either way, right? I mean, it may have been in the budget, but we wouldn't have spent it because we're only going to spend what the benefits are that they choose. This includes the one-mill reduction. So that's our recommendation, I'm, I'm going to say that's still our recommendation. But you know, in response to the request, so what are the alternatives? How, how can we get the current year budget closer to zero and still keep that, that burden, that tax burden in a proper place? I don't want to say as low as it can be because that may or may not be the best place, but where can we do it and keep it place? So what we're proposing here is keep the staffing changes that we proposed. We would for now take out the fifty thousand in capital budgets. I say for now because we could get into the year and say, hey, council, we would like to do this project. We need to repaint the community center, we need to put a new roof on it or something, and come to you and say, we would like to spend down fund balance by this amount of money to do this project. So you would have an input into that process. So I'm not saying, because those were not dollars we specifically earmarked to a project, so we can bring those projects back to you. And because of some of the ARPA and some of the other funding sources, those may be available for funding from other sources. We just don't know yet. So again, we were trying to build in some what-ifs into the budget. We were planning in the fire department to sell, so if you remember, we replaced one of the SUVs. Now, I don't even know if the new one's on the street yet because it's taken forever to get them outfitted, outfitted, whatever the right word is. But the intentions was we were going to basically sell or trade that in and replace it with a pickup truck that has better versatility to it. So fire scenes, they can throw hoses into it or bring the lights out there or additional air bottles or to run the errands, instead of taking a fire truck to go do these things or some other vehicle, you know, a pickup truck is fairly common in fire services for that kind of around the purpose. Now, you know, public works and others help them, you know, when they need it and vice versa. This would just be a dedicated truck. The difference between selling and buying, and we were looking at it just, you know, a purchase, was seventeen thousand. So we've taken that out. Again, we can add that back in, we can add that in at a future date. On the police department, we, we spoke, the chief and I, there's some equipment purchases in some of this because things have been so delayed, the things we thought were going to get replaced got delayed, or we were able to replace them earlier. So we backed out about twelve thousand out of there, including overtime, some overtime, five thousand in overtime. Because with that additional person, it will help, it doesn't eliminate overtime there. You know, I'll make this statement, just because you put a new person on will not eliminate overtime because somebody will work over because they're here at, you know, at one o'clock, and they get a call and they're here till three o'clock, and that's, you know, it creates overtime. I just, you will never eliminate overtime in twenty-four-hour operations or just about anywhere simply by saying, I'm going to add somebody, all eliminated, it just doesn't happen. So we're not going to, we're not going to play that game. So, but it, we, we are deferring and reducing some things. Street maintenance, we're just leaving that flat, we had showed it at fifty thousand, we're backing it to forty. Now, this is our general maintenance budget, this is not the capital projects that we talked about that being funded out of special street funds or any of those special sales tax. So, you know, this is fixing a pothole, putting a sign up, some of those types of things. And, and then the other item, we went back and looked at the revenues. And with more data, we really believe that the sales and use tax, specifically the use tax, will be higher than we originally budgeted. And motor vehicle tax estimates are notoriously low. So we went back and looked at prior years and said, okay, we still have to use some numbers for the state budget purpose, but what's the reality? And we feel like there's about $5,000 there that in reality will get from state motor vehicle taxes. And so we've increased the, the revenue there. That takes you, if, if we still stay with the one mil reduction, that puts you at a budget that for current year, so current year 2022, would have a deficit spending of 17,161 dollars, which again, on a 6.5 million dollar budget, I don't have my calculator, but is, is negligible. Right? And quite honestly, it's a budget. And I would bet right now, tonight, that it won't be 17,161. I can't tell you what it's going to be, but it would be unusual if we hit it to the dollar. But I think as you saw in previous presentations, we typically have been very careful with the funds and have put those, you know, back when we can. Even in the current year that we're talking about, where we hope to, you know, bring back in 20, 25,000 dollars back into the budget. The other funds, which again, we didn't really spend much time. I mean, because all of these are pretty well self-supporting funds, right? Debt service to pay for the debt service. We did talk a little bit about holding that fund balance up so we don't have to spike that, that mil levy in the future. So we just hold that mil levy flat there. Special sales tax. You know, we're getting to the end of that special sales tax. So we've been careful about getting things that are going out past the special sales tax period at this time. So you're going to see that fund balance come down a little bit. But, but again, you, you know, most of the expenditures in there are already bought. You know, aerial ladder trucks, fire. Mostly it's been fire. There's 100,000 in there for streets or did we, did we bump that? 100,000, I couldn't, I couldn't remember which ones we bumped. And there's money in there for parks, so pretty standard there. Really, the rest of them are pretty much money in, money out. We have a pretty good handle on those. We never budget revenue on EcoDevo unless we know we're going to have a specific project that's going to generate IRBs. We don't know of any at this point, so we don't budget for that. Again, special highway funds are somewhat determined by, by the state and that, that motor vehicle taxes also comes over, portions come over to here. So, and we know we're going to spend more out of that fund than the revenue in because we're going to do more road projects. That is the broad presentation of the budget. I'd be happy to answer questions. We do have, for your consideration, both the original budget that was presented, that was presented last time and reiterated tonight, I'll call it the staff recommendation, and the alternative budget. We have those budget sheets prepared for whatever action the city council may take. I would say we do need to adopt the budget because we are up to the, up to the timeframe to get those done. And so hopefully we've answered the questions, but we're happy to stand for other questions.
Mike, could you remind me again, what was per homeowner, the tax difference?
Let me go back so I don't, so I don't.
Didn't write it down, just.
No, no, that's.
Roughly, if you know, the tax difference.
So, and it, on either one of those two budgets, it won't necessarily make a difference because we're using the same mil levy, the 42,298. It just depends on, under this one, if, if I use 6.2% growth, which is our net growth rate, the monthly difference is $2.77, which is 33, 24 a year. If it's a lower rate of growth, again, using you all as kind of my, my pool to work from and use 4.53%, then it's $1.56 a month. So I would say you're talking somewhere between $1.50 and $3 a month if I'm going to just broaden it out. That's the decision.
Mike, the second proposal?
Yes, sir.
I guess if that's what it's called, proposal. Is that how it needs to be worded into a motion?
That's fine, I mean.
Alternate?
You can call it the alternate budget, right? But it'll be, we'll know what that means, if that's the recommendation.
I make a motion to adopt resolution, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Make a motion to certify the fiscal year 22, 22 alternate annual budget, setting the mil levy and the, I don't have the number there in front of me.
And again, understand, this is the, okay, just to make sure. So, so in total budget authority, that's all funds. It's 10,754,872 with property taxes generating 3,507,833. The estimated mil levy would be 42,298. At the end of the day, again, the mil levy, right? We submit this, they look at what that 3.5 million. If values go up or down, the final values, they, they generally vary a little bit, then get to that number.
Do you want me to add that, what you just said?
No, I just, I just put that in for the record. So you have a motion, I just make sure we're clear.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the alternate budget amount. I'm not going to read the figures again. There are no further questions. Would the clerk please call roll?
Can I make one, just one statement? If that's all right, question, statement?
Yes.
I think this answered all the, what we were asking from the previous meeting, that we got closer to where some wanted to be. And I appreciate everybody's work getting us there. Thank you.
Okay, would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
No.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
And Mayor McTaggart?
Yes.
The reason for my no vote is because I can't see all of that discussion and everything to amount to $1.27 a month per homeowner. That's, that's where my no comes from.
Okay, city managers report. Okay. Hey, you prepared a bunch of others, so I think we're going to say that suffice.
110th Street continues to move forward. A little bit of delay with water lines, but I think we've got all that worked out. I think you'll probably see, pretty soon, you'll see the base of curbs going in up there. So the inside curbs. So a lot of road projects. I can let Dusty talk about his other road projects if he like. I know we have a couple of things out there and I'll turn it over to him. But other than that, I don't have anything further at this time.
The, I assume you're talking about the 102nd Street project. The 102nd Street project, I believe we're about two and a half, three weeks off from that. We did a little pre-con last week. We got the contract signed today. And so we're getting all that kicked off, so that'll be a good project, get that done. They do have curbs in almost, almost the stretch of the project, the inside curbs up there on 110th. So that's exciting. We're seeing some stuff going down that's going to stay there. We are, BPU is really holding us up, struggling with them there. But Kings has been pretty amicable on that, working together with us to work with BPU on that. Forest Street, I think we, be patient with that. I think we're going to see some, it's pushed back a little bit more than I had hoped. I thought it was going to be full-blown construction starting this week. They're going to do some saw cutting and have kind of limited traffic control this week. Probably see some more work starting into next week and the following week on that. I think that's about it.
So they're not going to fully close forth?
No, and I didn't know that until a few hours, well, this morning, I guess, when I talked to, I don't know that the contractor knew exactly on that either, but.
We not, we don't control that?
Not.
That could be easier.
Entirely. Yeah.
Right.
That being said, they do, I mean, they are, they're consulting with me very heavily, so they are working with us. It's just a matter of getting them onsite and getting them to work. And some of that's against, beyond our control a little bit.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dust.
And then real quick, I don't know why the report didn't make it into the packet, but I will send it out to the council via email tomorrow and get that posted so you can be updated on everything that our departments are doing. Do want to show, do a quick shout out to the fire department who held two splash pad events over the last two weeks that were super fun. My kids had a blast, all the kids that attended had a blast. They had one just this past weekend at the elementary that looked, that, that all attended, had a, had a great time. So thank you to them for, for finding those opportunities. And then one more cheap plug for Autumn Fest this week. Outdoor movie night on Friday night. We'll have wrestling going on, not associated with Autumn Fest, but at the same time at the park that evening as well. And then all of our events going on Saturday, the 18th, which we've got a lot of information out about. So if you've got any questions about that, let me know and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Number one, Doug Hermrich, who served as our CSO, has retired, retired. And the first day for Tom Haas, who comes from us, he's retired for a few years now from over in Bonner Springs. He was a police sergeant for a number of years. His first day was a day. That, that report, we, we keep a fairly detailed log in our records management system of the CSO activities. And I would say it's more than 10 and under, little under 30. I don't have the exact number that, in the time that we've had this temporary service, that we've had all of those in compliance except for one of them. So we've had a number of knock on the doors, door hangers, a lot of activity in that area, a lot of abandoned vehicles, brush piles, lack of permits, you name it, we've been involved in it. The next piece that I was working on is the community service piece through the court that we're getting not only referrals from the, I would say, the metro area or association with that, but directly from the court to the community service officer. And we have, we've discussed a number of forms. I've made it very clear to those, the staff at the court, that that's the priority of the commission as well as the city manager. That's our policy, it's our priority. And that we want those direct referrals and we're going to put them to work doing those things. There's some forms we're creating and doing it a little bit differently just because we like to have things in a certain standardized manner. So not, not a criticism of how it handled before, but we think we're going to get a little more compliance, a little more activity and ensuring that the court is also aligned with that policy as well. And I've gotten some positive feedback from them. So we've been, that's, that's a lot of our activity has been with our community service officer and the rest of it, we keep plugging away. We did sell three vehicles, you know, we had a used car lot out there for a little while. And we sold two 2015 vehicles and a 2017 vehicle. In a, in a, in a year where used vehicles are bringing a premium, these all had an excess of 100,000 miles and were actually somewhat nearly 30% less in what they brung from in the past. So we didn't get all that much for them that we expected. And, but it is what it is. We use Purple Wave. We didn't have any municipalities that were interested in those particular vehicles, which is our first priority is see who might need them and want to, want to purchase them directly. And our last sale, which was last year, I believe, a municipality from Missouri had purchased that, but they had done it through Purple Wave. So that's who we're using and that, it's, it's pretty flawless. So we've got that done, got them off the lot and they're all taken care of.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nothing really to report other than the service announcements for calls last month was posted on Facebook. The department made 89 emergency responses with our average response time of three minutes and 50 seconds again. And then crews performed over 226 hours of training as a total on top of the splash pads, leading fire hydrants and everything else that was going on. So typical busy month.
Okay, going to the council reports, Chuck Snipes will start with you. Margaret?
Zach, I always want to thank you and I know you have several people help you for putting together the Autumn Fest. That doesn't happen in a day, a week or a month. I know it takes a lot of time to put everything together, but I know you have a lot of help. But thank you for doing that. Going back to number four item, the property that we discussed that we're going to go forward with. Is there going to be any kind of letter, any kind of communication, just a flat? This is what happened tonight in 30 days? Just, just, just in case, I mean.
Yes, we will. We, we have tried, I mean, I will say, we have communicated a number of times, but we will, we, we have his contact information. We will make sure that he gets.
30 more days, a lot can happen, but.
Right.
At least we know we tried.
Yes.
And as far as the rural housing incentive, incentive district was, so would the planning commission not be any part of that?
Well, they, they, yes, they will be.
Okay.
More, more in the design phase and, and that, that, that phase of it. They do have to be noticed.
In your, in your present, I never, you never mentioned them, but.
I, I did not, yes. They will, they will be in a part because that will become a subdivision. So they'll go through all of that part of the process as well.
So an office manager has been hired?
Yes, we do have a new office manager, Laura Robertson, who actually is a local resident here. Laura Robertson, Robinson, Robinson, I'll get it right here. But she is a local, she is a local resident here. We had a, an excellent pool. Has it been that long? Yeah.
And she's still coming back?
Yes, yes, so far.
Well, if she could come time, come to a meeting and meet us or.
Yeah, we'll try, we'll see if we can arrange that. Or if you're by the office during the day, I'm sure she's happy. If you see a, a bright colored Jeep with the doors off in the parking lot, that probably means she's here. So she has a big Jeep that she drives.
Regarding the budget, I would like to, again, thank everybody, all the office heads, everybody that's a part of that. I am, as part of the council up here, I think it's our duty to question, maybe see if it can be better, maybe if there's some modifications, whatever the case may be. Thank you for all your hard work. And one more thing about the budget, I am proud. We, as a council, we as a city, didn't have to lower any of our staff's salaries during COVID. I know many, many people, including myself, took pay cuts, so probably never had to do that.
No, we worked hard at that, but thank you. And we appreciate your support.
Proud to do it. Thank you.
Garrett?
I wanted to make a comment on the, whichever police officer flew the drone over the big boy when it was down there. I thought that was television worthy, that was Hollywood worthy, that activity. That, that was just really cool to see that. And I did get an opportunity to go have breakfast on the dining car, that thing. And that was, it was an awesome experience and I appreciate that. I don't like to be the bad apple up here on the budget, but I think that. I don't like to be the bad apple up here on the budget, but I think that. Anyway, I I don't like to be the bad apple. I just, I just, I'm looking at a dollar twenty a month and, you know, I'm just not really figuring that out. We've been discussing for over a year, the improvements that need to be made and the money that needs to be spent on street improvement, cemetery and all that. And I think that by our department heads happen to cut, you know, some of the money that they're needing and and all of that. I just think it was the wrong move. And, you know, I appreciate what the council did and it's okay. I'll stand by that. But I'm still not a big fan of that. Appreciate the staff's efforts on that. I know that was above and beyond the call of duty and they really do an excellent job, I think. I think that we need to thank Dustin for the efforts that he's doing on our public works department. We we've come a long ways, I think, since he's been hired here. And we see him out there a lot. And I think that he's really a definite asset for the city. But I think sometimes he goes unrecognized and I'd like to make sure that he's recognized for that. So and that's all I've got.
Carolyn, it's your turn.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Um, I wanted to thank our department heads and and Mike for bringing budget alternatives this week. I felt like that was really helpful. I did have several community members after the last meeting just reaching out and and appreciating the proposal to have options presented before us. And I know that it's a lot of work and appreciate you guys doing that. It was asked that we bring some solutions and and I met with Mike after that and we talked about possibly letting our police vehicles go a little bit longer before turning them over. And then also the potential option of going or initiating an online reporting system for our police department to alleviate some of that manpower in those hours, not instead of hiring the new officer, but in addition to hiring the new officer. And that way, our officers wouldn't be spending so much time on paperwork, but would be able to have more time patrolling and backing each other up. So hopefully, um, that option could be considered as we move forward, just to give even more time on the street or availability for our officers. Also wanted to welcome the new officer. We just had somebody join the ranks, it looks like on Facebook today. Thank our fire department for the pop-up splash parks. Community members really have loved those. Those were a big hit. And our fire department goes beyond what what a lot of other ones do to benefit our community. Also have had great feedback. People are really excited about the full depth repairs coming on a hundred and second street. And so hopefully we'll see those soon. Let's see. The last thing I just wanted to do, a quick update for our Edwardsville mobile pantry. Both Margaret and Chuck Stikes were there to help out as well as several other community members. I saw some of our police officers helping control traffic for us. We were able to serve twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty pounds of food to over four hundred people. We were able to stock up the Von Trent pantry that serves Bonner and Edwardsville and also brought a lot of food to our seniors who live at the high rise. So thank you to everyone who helped out with that. I really appreciate it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Chuck?
I'll ditto all the thank yous for the the personnel and the managers and so forth. I I voted yes on the budget because it's, in my mind, it's mostly symbolic. In the past, we have those large expenses, uh, like the community center, that type of thing, we approved on a case by case basis. And in many of the years in the past, we have opted not to purchase a vehicle part of the way through the year when we saw revenues and so forth. So to me, it's tomato, tomato. It's, we end up at the same place, I think. And so that was, that was the reason for my yay vote on that. I do appreciate everyone's budget management over the last X number of years and know it will continue into the future. So thank you very much.
Okay, I really don't have much more to add, but I would like to take this opportunity to to recognize Mike again. Last week, we attended the MRP conference in in Branson and and Mike was given a a plaque as the outgoing chairman of the board of directors for the Midwest Public Risk and Metcalf Public Risk of Kansas, Inc. anyway. And and really from them and from from me, because I've seen Mike work at this so many years, the the thank you for your service to NPR and its members. And the city is a member of MRP, NPR, and it has served us well. Okay, thanks again to everybody, including the council. But with that, we are adjourned.